Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, March 10th, 2014, 7:00 PM. And City Council is having a series of three committee meetings tonight. And before we begin, just a brief hello and get well greetings to our Council President, Jim Sands, who's not able to be with us tonight. He had a brief fall. He's home recuperating and we're hoping he's back next week. So greetings to Jim. Finance and Personnel Committee will be first. We have three items tonight and we have several guest presenters. So what I'm going to do is slightly alter the order of the agenda to get these early announcements and appropriation items out of the way and then give the podium to our guests Greg Andrews and Glenn Griffin. Okay, the first one is an announcement that our utility bills have an online payment portal now on the website. And thanks very much to our deputy and Service Safety Director, Deputy Director Ron Lucas and Service Safety Director Paula Rand Mosley and Administration, the Mayor, all being supportive of this and moving forward on this. It does make credit card payments available online, so you have to go to the city website. There is a $3.95 convenience charge per transaction. So you can't go to the window and pay with a credit card, but you can do this online. And we're thinking this will make it a lot easier. People have been asking us about this for some time. So thank you very much. I know it required some work getting it up there. The second item is an update that we received, the tax year valuations and tax rates update from the Athens County Auditor. And these are, these rates are set by the Athens County Budget Commission. There's no action required. This was just a revision to update our estimates based on the current rates. So no revision on that. And I think it slightly revises our anticipated income. Earlier in, well, it was actually towards the end of last year when we accepted the rates, our anticipated revenue from these property tax valuations was about $322,000. And I think the revised rate has us anticipating about $326,000. So we thank the county for letting us know about that update on it. We have under appropriations, two items. And these will be presented in an appropriation ordinance next week. The first set are for taxes and assessments for property that the city owns. One of them is an assessment that the community center will have for $12,000. And these are for Hocking Conservancy improvements made during the year. And that will be charged to the community center account. Second item for taxes is our purchase of property last year. We had three pieces of property. The Hope Property, which is over towards University Estates where we're doing some work towards improving the bike path and expanding that. The second item is the Dowler Property, which is on the Camp Rotan. And then our Columbus Road Property. And so these taxes that are due right now total $8,000 and they'll come out of the general fund. And then we also have-
Just one comment on that is that all of those properties will most likely become tax exempt, but there's a process where you have to pay the taxes, apply to the state, and then we'd get that money back if we are allowed to be taxed exempt.
Good, okay, that's good. I wasn't sure whether it was returned or not. So that's good. So we are in the process and as I understand, we're in the final stages of identifying some information that's needed and we'll be able to file that soon.
Right, I think two of them, the paperwork's done and then one of them still needs some paperwork done. And then the Law Director's Office files that for us.
Great, thank you. The last item for taxes are the properties owned on Blackburn Road and Central Avenue. And these properties, the taxes due for them will come out of the CDBG money, the Community Development Block Grant Program. And nothing is budgeted so far for these taxes, so we'll need $4,400 for that amount. And then the other appropriation item that's needed is for the community center account, 271. And we do have an unappropriated balance in that fund of $351,000. You may remember that what happened earlier in the year is we had some additional monies that we realized could be adjusted out of the salary line. And so we now have money to be able to put into other accounts where the Director of the Community Center, Rich Campitelli, has identified that we need it. So the items that we are requesting then for the ordinance next week will be $30,000 for supplies, $7,000 for maintenance supplies, $35,000 for electric, $5,000 for natural gas, and $20,000 for professional services. So that totals $97,000. Did I get them all?
You did.
Okay.
We wanted to add a miscellaneous though.
Oh. A miscellaneous, under the community center or a miscellaneous?
It includes them, it's basically computers purchases. Some of the departments have put them in their budget under, you know, 200, 300. We've requested they come out of capital improvement. So some will be a transfer, but there's also a request for up to $20,000 across different departments.
In the capital improvements line? Okay, $20,000.
That would also include a plotter replacement that we haven't had in place for about a year. That would be, that's utilized between the planner and the engineering and public works and it's located down there at 28 Kern.
And I'm sorry, is that within the $20,000 or in addition?
Be more.
Pardon me?
It'll probably be more. I think they're pricing it right now, so.
Okay, so we'll have the information before Monday. But the $20,000 for computers then, out of the 580 capital improvements. Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, what I'd like to do is proceed with HAPCAP representatives who are here tonight. And they have some information to present to us on bundling, potentially bundling our grants with Nelsonville and the county. And then also a critical infrastructure grant program. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Andrews. Thanks for coming.
My name's Greg Andrews. I'm the Director of Housing and Community Development with Hocking Athens, Craig Community Action. I'll be talking a little bit about the CHIP program. And then following me will be Glenn Griffin, our CD Coordinator, talking about the critical infrastructure opportunity. There've been a lot of changes with the CHIP program over the summer of 2013. The program was reevaluated by the state and against major changes have taken place. CHIP, Community Housing Improvement Program was the old name. The new name is the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program. So you're aware of that. Primarily, the major change that we'll talk about tonight, there's some changes in some of the activities that were available and we can talk a little bit about that. But we've seen a trend, I think at the state level, with reducing the number of administrators for programs. We've seen this with the homeless programs where there used to be a variety of applicants or grantees for those programs. And we, the state has developed regions for those. So in our region, which I believe is Region 18, I believe there were like seven different grantees in those programs. And now there's only one, and that is the region. And it's administered actually in our area by Integrated Services. So that's what I'm saying. And with the CHIP program, it's a little different approach, but this year it will be developing partnerships. And ultimately, that will reduce the number of applicants to the state level. The City of Athens, if you recall, was here last year about this time and the city applied. These are two-year grants. The city was eligible to apply last year and did. We took our process, our planning process, the public hearings and all that, applied in April of last year and was funded in September. And that program is well underway and again, it's a two-year program. The activities, just to give you a little bit of an update while I'm here, the activities were home repair, 13 of those. There were three private owner rehabs. And there were two rental rehabs. And we've identified the homes for the rental rehab. We've identified eight of the 13 home repair and we have a variety, a lot of applications out. So those will be coming in and then a little slower, and that's very typical, is to find the, to identify the private owner rehabs. But we're, I'm very pleased with where we're at with that right now. So typically, the city would not be eligible to apply this year, but to facilitate the partnering of the states allowing that. So we, Community Action administers six programs for six different entities. The Athens County, the City of Athens, the City of Nelsonville, Hocking County, Perry County, and the City of Logan. It has worked well the way we've applied and it's been three and three, going off years. So this year, the city, rather, well, the City of Nelsonville and Athens County are eligible to apply on the two-year cycle. To facilitate again, the bundling or the partnership, the City of Athens can come in on that. There's definitely a carrot on a stick here. The funding levels are higher if you partner. The previous funding levels were $400,000. Last year was $400,000 for a grantee. It's changed this year. Athens County would be, if they applied alone, they would be eligible for only $400,000. If they partnered, they're eligible for $450,000. The city, $350,000 alone, $400,000 if they partner. And the City of Nelsonville, it has to do with population numbers, would be $350,000 or $300 or $350,000. So there's that as well as points. These applications are evaluated over a variety of criteria, potentially 100 points. The folks that bundle, that are, folks that are eligible to bundle and do not will lose considerable amount of points. Folks that do bundle will be eligible for those points. In that particular criteria, there are 30 points available. These are very, very competitive grants. You want to go after every potential point that you possibly can. So that is pretty much where it is. We would encourage that the city would apply this year. I mentioned the funding levels. If you kind of think about this, they're two-year grants. The city was just funded. So if we apply again, the city applies again and is funded in this partnership, you'd only get half the money. But that kind of makes sense. It would ultimately be a three-year program with the funding levels as opposed to your two-year level. That's the way it's laid out. That's the incentive to do so. Another, something else that has to be decided, we've talked to the city, we've talked to the county, we've talked to the City of Nelsonville to some degree about who the applicant would be. Because only one entity can be the applicant. All the programs will be somewhat independent, but there can only be one applicant. And that applicant will be responsible for all three, all three programs, all three entities. So it would be our suggestion, of course, that the county would be the applicant for the programs. And that's, they would have the responsibility. And I've talked to the commissioners about this to see if they would be willing to do that, if that's what everybody decides and they said they would be willing to do that. I think that's about it. We would need to go through the public hearing process. That can be, we have the option to do that at the county level. We have the option to hold public hearings with each of the applicants or the partners, I should say. So we can, you know, we don't need to decide on that right away, but that's something that we can do. And I think that pretty much covers the partnering. Does anybody have any questions? We'll talk a bit about the activities, but.
Greg, so are there any special programs right now that people are wanting done or is it the same type of activities that we have?
Well, the activities have been reduced dramatically. There used to be a large list of activities that you could apply. There was even like a tool loan program. Oftentimes, we talked about the, they had a code enforcement activity, but it was never really geared the way it sounded. It was code enforcement to enforce codes with the activities that were in the program. So it just didn't really work out. And they've realized that and they've gotten rid of a lot of the activities. The activities that are available now are private owner rehab, rental rehab, home repair, a new one, rental home repair, tenant-based rental assistance, and homeownership. Those are the activities that are available. So the homeownership is a down payment assistance and rehab activity. And we've, that's always been a successful, was previously prior to the downfall. But we are, the current City of Logan program, we have some down payment assistance in that grant. And I think it's all going to come back for us. But the rental home repair, the guidelines have not been written yet. I talked to the state today and told them I was coming to council tonight. It'd be nice to be able to give you some detail on it, but I don't have any detail. April 1, I'll have the detail on it. But it's, it will be a home repair program available for rental properties. If a landlord is income eligible, there is no participation required. If a landlord is not income eligible to meet the program, then there's a monetary requirement. They would have to meet, there are affordability requirements, the rent restrictions. So there are a lot of things and I'm not, I don't have all the information yet. But I think it's kind of an exciting activity. I think it may well have a place, especially here in the city.
I'm really interested in the down payment assistance rehab because we have quite a few, we have a real divide between who can afford to live in the City of Athens, for instance. And many people who are middle-class cannot get into the housing market here.
Yep, yeah, I agree. And again, it's an activity that I think is very worthwhile. And we can certainly take a look at that. Now, we will put the Housing Advisory Committee together and they will, this will review everything and we'll come back with some recommendations, but they're only recommendations. Do whatever you like.
The City of Athens wouldn't be obligated to bundle at this time with, I'm trying to work in my head why there'd be an advantage for-
For the city to partner?
To partner with-
This, well, this-
Well, we've already got it secured for two years, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so wouldn't we be better off to wait until our cycle comes back up again?
Well, then-
Then partner with someone who would be also eligible and that way we'd get the full grant, half a grant?
Yes, we've taken a look at this and looked at all the, we've played out a lot of different scenarios here of how this would work best. And let me just, I'll talk more about that, but Hocking County is eligible to apply this year and they've agreed to not apply. So they can get in sync with their partnership, the Perry County and the City of Logan. The City of Logan, the City of Athens, you can only, the cities can only partner with the counties in which they're located. Counties can partner with adjacent counties. Again, you lose points and funding amounts if you don't partner. And really, if you look at it like this is an opportunity, and this is the way the state has it developed, for, to get everybody in sync, to get everybody, all the partnerships in line. Never before have we had, have you been able to apply back to back. And that's, so that's their fix to get the partnerships developed now. Does that make sense?
Well, I suppose from the state point of view, but I just don't see how Athens is really benefiting.
Well, you're right, other than, other than it will get us in line for future grants.
Right.
That's an opportunity to get that all where it needs to be. So you're right.
For altruistic reasons, it'd be good if we did.
Yes. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
And so you're saying your recommendation is the possibility of Athens County being the single applicant, that there will be, am I understanding right then, a housing advisory board that would assist with different topics?
Yes.
And so your agency would be the person, the group selecting that housing advisory board?
It's very scripted from the state level and it's a planning process. They tell us who we will invite to participate. And it's quite a variety of folks in the community that will bring it. And a lot of it also, the purpose to do that is just collaboration, is for folks to have an opportunity to get together. And so, you know, ideally that we're not duplicating services. Oftentimes from these, you know, folks like, anybody has their pet ideas from these other groups, but, you know, ideally, these are housing funds and their, housing funds are limited. Funds to support affordable housing are limited and that's what this is geared for. So really, the planning is also an opportunity just for collaboration. So, but yes, we'll bring that together as administrator and bring it back for-
So your recommendation would be to move forward, showing good faith effort that we're wanting to collaborate, to bundle, and to consider authorizing the city then to apply with the county?
Yes, that's exactly it.
And if I may, off that, as he said, it's really prescriptive. And when we talk about pulling, do we pull separate public meetings and what have you? The Housing Advisory Commission, we need, it's the same faces from the same kind of entities. Local government staff, community action agency, public housing authority, fair housing representative, community development staff, homeless shelter agency, board of developmentally disabled, care agency on aging, habitat for humanity, job and family services, landlord association, which we struggle with sometimes and get someone there, local health department, local continuum of care. So these people all know housing and know, have the backgrounds in dealing with the special populations that they interact with.
Thank you for that, Mr.-
Timeline is the application I have down here is due around June 6. Right. So we need a Housing Advisory Commission meeting, at least one or two public hearings, either on the county level or the city level, for all three entities. And again, what we're doing is we're just recycling through our CHIP grant faster so we can get into the, in sync with the other entities. And of course, the incentive is about $50,000 for each entity more. At least that's the way I see it right now. I don't think our needs are that different. Again, the Athens County Housing Coalition pretty much covers everybody in the county already and they see pretty much the same problems or issues. A little bit different flavors in terms of structures for Nelsonville versus the rest of the county versus us, but pretty much the needs are the same. Not enough money, not enough housing for low and moderate income.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then Glenn, you had some information to present to us?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Glenn Griffin. As Greg Andrews mentioned, our agency administers community development programs, which is HUD money, federal money that comes through the state. Our agency has successfully administered these programs for all sorts of grantees over the years from counties to cities such as Athens and even townships throughout the whole three-county service region that we serve. The CDBG budget at the state level has been shrinking every year. The dollars are becoming harder to get. Everything is becoming more competitive for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Last year, the state announced a new set aside budget, if you will, or a new set aside program of the CDBG formula program, or actually, it's now called the allocation program. Historically, it had been called the formula program. And the city automatically gets some of that formula, CDBG, every year as part of a, as part of a formula of how many residents are in the city and how many LMI residents reside here. Anyhow, last year, the state announced an additional program. It's a competitive program called the Critical Infrastructure Program. The statewide budget for this program is about $2.5 to $3 million. And they basically are awarding grants in the amounts of $300,000 to cities and counties across the state to address critically needed, single-component infrastructure projects. When we heard about this, we thought about the City of Athens and were curious, you know, what types of projects they might have down the pike that they might be working on as far as critical infrastructure goes. Some of the eligible activities under critical infrastructure are sewage facility improvements, water facility improvements, streets, curbs and sidewalks, flood and drainage such as culverts and whatnot. These needs are abundant in the city and just about everywhere in our region. So a couple of weeks ago, we requested to meet with city staff and we spoke with Andy Stone and learned about what types of projects he may have on his radar that would be large, large projects that need substantial funding. And we learned about a project that may fit very well into that program. And it's applying for critical infrastructure dollars to rehabilitate or repair a sewage lift station on Depot Street that serves the entire west side of town. So, you know, that project approximately would be $400,000 to $450,000. And the CDBG funding available could fund up to $300,000 of that. Some of the requirements of the program are that the benefit area for this project be a low to moderate income block group or census tract. Unfortunately, we're still using data from the 2000 census that the state insists that we use until better data is available from the Fed from, as a result of the 2000 census. So either we could perform our own survey to find out what the LMI is, the low to moderate income rate or percent, if you will, of the city, or we can use data that's pretty old. The data we have is from the 2000 census and these block groups need to be at least 51% LMI. The 2000 census defines them as being over 80% LMI. So they're still on record, if you will, as being very high LMI. These areas are, have a high potential to be funded if the city were to apply to the state for some of this funding. So we were interested in partnering with the city to perhaps write this grant application and if funded, to administer the program on behalf of the city. The city would still be the grantee. The city would still make the decisions about the grant. But HAPCAP would administer the program from start to finish, including grant application, program management, compliance, citizen participation, performing the environmental review. And, you know, as these grants become less and less available, it's important, you know, it's important to administer a strong program and do a good job with the dollars that are available. So having said that, we're very interested in working with the city to extend and provide some of our services if we're, if it's, you know, if we're able to do it. And that's a little bit about the Critical Infrastructure Program. Another requirement of it is that the city provide match funding for it. It requires, it does require some match. It's not a set amount. There's some other CDBG programs that require a 50% match. This one's not that case. They do recommend using as much match funding as you can find. And that helps with the competitive nature, the scoring of the grant, the more matched the better and from more, as many sources as possible. The city could even use some of its CDBG allocation money that it automatically receives from the state. It could use some of that funding if it is so desired or not. It could use sewer revenue or any other type of local fund that it would wish to identify as being usable for the project. So that's a little bit about the Critical Infrastructure Program. And we have not, we applied last year on behalf of Athens County, but we didn't have any match funding for it. So I, you know, it wasn't a successful grant application as far as that goes, but it was the first year that it was available. And the funding is specifically for single-component, critically-needed, infrastructure projects that have a high impact on the community and serve an LMI population. So all of those things line up and the city could pursue some of that funding. And I, you know, I have a feeling I would be very optimistic about it being funded if it were to apply. It makes, it makes a good grant application and it's a badly needed project and it's something we were curious to explore. So, does anybody have any questions or?
May I add just a little bit?
Sure.
The depot lift station also serves a hospital. So that's our critical infrastructure component. The other thing is, as you're painfully aware, we've taken on a lot of sewer debt for the next 20 years. So as opposed to trying to take additional debt in order to do this, and we did talk about maybe using our formula grant as some of the match to reduce that match burden that would occur in it. The only, we just have to write a compelling narrative because they want it to be highly visible. It's kind of difficult to explain- It's kind of difficult to explain highly visible sewage, but yeah.
It's very highly visible when it backs up, though.
Yes.
Mike, I have a question. I don't know who could answer it, but since we're going to be doing improvements on Union anyway, I think this summer, is that correct?
Correct.
Would this, this would be after those improvements, correct?
Right.
If it would happen, but so would that may be a difficulty? Would we be tearing the streets up again?
No, this is further down Depot past the station area by the Life Science Building. You go by that little brick area, there's a little blockhouse there.
Right.
That once in a while smells pleasant, so.
I don't hang around it that much, so.
I used to work in the building next door and I'd hear about it all the time.
We are talking about doing some stormwater enhancements and even applying for some funding for educational purposes with the West Union Project. That would talk about the stormwater going to the old Oakesville and all those stations. That'd be nice. It's nice. Yes.
If funded, the time period would be from September of this year and it would be a 24-month grant. So the work, there would be, we would need to perform an environmental review, which would occur over the winter. And then the project would need bid out in the spring and the ground wouldn't break until next, next spring, early summer. Then we would have clear until the next year to complete the project, so.
I like what I'm hearing. It's funny, I was sitting here the whole time kind of waiting for the other shoe to drop because I'm just hearing good, good, good.
Yeah.
But it's just the match. The significant thing would be coming up with appropriate matches to make this go through.
Yep, absolutely. And if the city could provide engineering services for the project internally, that would be something that, or not, you can use the CDBG grant to pay for that if you want to hire an engineer or if the city could, you know, engineer the project, it would allow more dollars for construction. So it's a great program. We hope to...
Would engineering go towards a match in-house?
Absolutely, yep.
Also in-kind?
Collaboration with Ohio Health, is that just too far?
It's a good question. I hadn't thought about that. I can tell you that we have this, you know, wastewater engineering firm kind of held captive for the next year, so they have looked at this. That's why they've at least glanced and done their first look.
I mean, it seems significant for the sewer issues if, you know, because it is kind of the healthcare corridor there, so an approach...
Rather, we're going to do the formula money or allocation money, which is about $60,000 this time. This year, it's going to go through, which will have your building house there, is to have HAPCAP administer both of them. In other words, apply for both and administer both so they're in tandem. One becomes a match for the other one.
Right.
That, you know, whatever we can get for terms of internal money or as you say, engineering within or even just buying it ourselves. And again, anything that'll take the dollars off, have to fix that. That's a structure that's been fairly old. I forget how many years, 30? Yeah, the discussion was, it's at the back end of its lifespan anyway and you can upgrade.
1952, I think.
Fifty-two.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's thirty.
It's old.
Well, thank you very much for coming and it sounds like a wonderful opportunity for us and we certainly appreciate the work we've done on other projects with HAPCAP. We've done a great job with our other programs.
Thank you.
So potentially we need an attorney to authorize us to enter the contract with HAPCAP, apply for the grants, et cetera, right? And probably some public hearings along the way.
And I'm sorry, the application for the Critical Infrastructure?
June 21st.
June 21st and June 6th for years. Okay. Do we have any other miscellaneous items on finance and personnel? If not, turn it over to planning.
We have two agenda I notes tonight. The first is the liquor permit transfer. It's been requested by citizens that we talk about requesting a hearing about a liquor permit transfer. The permit transfer in question is the permit that was held in safekeeping from West Sideburn and the entity of Fluff Bakery would like to have it transferred to their business. And there has been people in town who requested that, the opportunity to have a hearing on this transfer, which the city, the state level, the alcohol controlling board, would hold. And usually, we have, we haven't done one of these for a long time, so I'd like to have a discussion at council level. Normally, in this sort of thing, we would have public comments at city council and not necessarily during committee. However, I know that the people from Fluff Bakery are here tonight and they would like to make a presentation. However, normally on rules, we have a three-minute time limit, which we are requested to keep. So I'd like to open it up for discussion at the, for city council members and administration. Anybody?
I have a comment and that is that in my time on city council, which I began, first held my seat in 2012, just for the record, that there's been five of these that have gone through. One in particular, it was very similar and as well on Court Street, that went through with, without a request for a hearing. So this is the first one that's, that there's been a hearing.
Okay. Chris, did you have?
We do have communication from the Coalition Advocating Responsible Drinking Decisions and they did share with the Division of Liquor Control as well as city council members their work on campus. They've been involved on campus since 1996, working to reduce high-risk drinking. And so they, in their letter, they highlight some of the work they've been involved with and since 2003, when the high-risk drinking rate among students was 79%. In 2013, the rate has been reduced to 63%. And they're saying that one of the strategies to reduce the high-risk drinking and create environmental change is to limit the availability of alcohol. And so it's from that perspective that I think that they're raising the concern that this is one more venue where alcohol will be available. And if I'm understanding the permit correctly, it is for D1, D2, D3, and D3A. So this would permit a carryout on the premises. So, you know, they're just, their point is the transfer of this license would increase the availability of alcohol in a highly populated area on Court Street. So I did want to share that with you. And they, that group has been working hard. I've been involved with the group for a number of years and as well as a lot of other community members, educators. So that's another piece of information to share.
I was just going to follow up on what Steve said about, since he's been on council. However, there was a challenge to a request for a liquor license transfer and I believe it was in that building. And I just don't remember if it was on the Peter Pit side or before Fluff Bakery went in, that was challenged and did not go through. I believe that was the Elbow Room license transfer or...
I think they established their try and put together as a varsity and I think, I think it might have been on Peter Pit's side, but I'm not sure.
Do you mean...
And they withdrew it.
Didn't go through the license, the transfer didn't go through or the hearing requested?
The hearing request...
The hearing went through, I believe. The person applying withdrew the perm, the request for the permit.
Because of challenges by people.
Grace Ellman has been, any of these have been denied historically.
Even when there is a challenge, yeah. But that one was, or maybe he withdrew, but yeah.
I think for the public, it's important to also know that, I mean, what these mean. You know, there's A licenses, there's Bs, there's Cs, there's Ds, and it goes on and on. And this particular one is for restaurant slash nightclub. There are restaurants in the city of Athens that carry these same permits and that are eating establishments.
Really, Ds are for serving liquor. Wine, wine and beer, I think is the D1 maybe. D2 is like hard liquor. D3, I think is extended hours maybe.
Right, but it's...
And Cs are carryouts, As are manufacturers, breweries, and Bs, I think are distributors.
Distributors.
So this is for serving essentially.
My spiel here is a little different. It's, it's important for people to realize that the city council does not approve or disapprove of a liquor license transfer. We have no authority for that, but the law does give us the authority to request a hearing from the state. That's all we can do. We can request it. And I'm of the opinion that because we are elected officials, if we have any entity within the city, individual or group or OU or something like that, who has an issue, wants to discuss it, there's certainly nothing wrong with discussing it in a formal hearing. And I think, given that, we should request a hearing. I don't, I agree with the mayor, the odds of it not being approved are pretty low. And in fact, the Division of Liquor Control doesn't even have to give us a hearing. It's optional. We're requesting a hearing, which is implicit meaning they can deny it. They can say, well, don't want to. I don't know how often that happens, probably, you know, not very often. So I just don't see any harm in discussing it in a hearing. It's part of due process, it's part of the law. We can do that and I think we should. That's my opinion.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's fine. I just wanted to let council, so you can hear the concerns, so.
First of all, thanks for coming. My name is Jason.
Right, is there a sign-up sheet? Okay, there should, just sign in and, and then...
Debbie's in charge of the three minutes. It's the first time that we've done it since we've done.
Okay. My name's Jason Kopowitz. My wife and I own Fluff Bakery. I don't want to go on and on. I just, we were gone last week when this came up at the very tail end of city council and the part that troubles me a little bit is that nobody's come to us. We've done everything. I think I sent each of you a letter via email. I've contacted Michelle. You said that you're not interested in letting me know who has an issue and we're good neighbors. We want to talk to our neighbors and discuss things and part of that is, you know, conversation. And I've had multiple customers come in and say, you're shutting Fluff down and turning it into a bar? I have no idea where that's coming from. We have no intention of doing that. We essentially want to do what either council or mayor has done in the past where you've, you know, the Trex permit. If you would like to do a Trex permit for us, we won't enact this one. We'll go for the Trex. You know, if you want to restrict our hours and our activities, we have no interest in a bar. We've worked way too hard to produce a very community-minded business and it's a little bit insulting to not be able to talk that through with people who may or may not have a problem. That's really about all I have to say. I mean, I do think that it's worth mentioning that, you know, you can be flippant about your chances of a successful challenge, but that's $2,000 or $3,000 out of our pocket that we could otherwise pay our employees, give away to local charities. So it's, you know, you can be flippant about your chances of success and the politics behind it, but at the end of the day, we're trying to run a business and support our workers. So that's, you know, if anybody has any questions, I'd love to address them, but I don't want to go on and on.
Counsel have questions? Great, thank you. Oh, yeah. Otherwise Debbie will have the red binger. That's why we have that.
Let me write my name first.
Very democratic here.
Again, thank you for having us. It's pretty, it's great to have the opportunity to talk to all of you. I really respect you and what you do because there's no way I could be, sit through meetings and make major decisions like you guys are making, so. But I do want to say that I think we have made ourselves pretty available. I, I too was appalled today when one of our regular customers asked me if I was shutting Fluff down. Just so all of you know, and it's really, I don't really have to tell you, but my husband and I pretty much sold everything that we have to do what we do and we're honored to have what we have. And I also, the concerns about the drinking. I went to school here, I was a student here, I've done the late-night scene, but I also don't want to own that. I have no, no reason to do that. So, you know, what we want to do is have a full-service restaurant. You know, there's a lot of good restaurants on Court Street, but we want to be able to do more. And this really allows us to update our menu, to be able to offer more of a mix at Fluff. I mean, we already do some date night things, but it would be great for people to be able to have, come in, have a dessert and have a glass of wine or a cocktail. So I too am just, I want to be here and I'm here for questions, so feel free at any time. I think, you know, we're here. Also, I wanted to point out too, Fluff is fully owned by me, 100%. I have all the paperwork, anything you want to know, I own it 100%. The liquor license is owned by J.J. and J. on Court. I do have a 50% managing interest in that, but that does not have any interest in my business Fluff. So just so you know, and I can, we can go over the details of that, but I don't know if I have to, but there's no ownership interest in my business. So I make the decisions, nobody else. I've also worked out with my landlord, who I pay a considerable amount of rent to, to make sure he's okay with what I'm doing. And that's already in our lease stated that we can't own a bar, that our liquor sales can't be over a certain percentage of our rent, of our sales. So all that's built into what we already do. I may be giving you more information than you need to know, but I want you to know that we're not hiding anything. So if you do have questions, please ask. Thanks.
I think one thing I'd like to address is city council sometimes acts as a way that members of the community, we do live in a very small community and we all know each other. And so sometimes people don't necessarily want to come forward with concerns and complaints or air their grievances just because we, you know, it's a small community and sometimes council connect as a stopgap or a pressure relief valve. And so I think that council members not, not saying who has come forward to ask or request a hearing is legitimate for council because people sometimes come to us, businesses come to us, you know, requesting certain things such as a hearing in somewhat confidence. And so I think that that's a reasonable thing. I, you know, if a hearing is approved, then everything would be in sunshine and everything would be public. And so, and that's the correct place to have that. We are not the decision-making body on this. We, when we get the request forms, which the city sends us, when we get the request forms, we usually announce them under, on city council nights under, you know, memorandum or communications and this one was the same thing. To address Steve's issue is we haven't been requesting a lot of these. I think that maybe people are saying, well, maybe we should because there's been a growing concern about increasing. As a development and economic and planning person, you know, I want to see a nice mix on Court Street. And so maybe the city residents who are concerned about this are concerned about the same thing. And so I think, I understand that hearings can cost money and they cost time. However, I think that as a public entity that council is, we have to represent everybody and there has been a number of people who have voiced concern about this. And I think that a hearing would be a logical way of doing with it and because there's so much misunderstanding and such and...
I have one question. Someone approached me and asked me about it when I didn't even know that anything had been...
by the public that it warrants a hearing. And we can see whether the, you know, Alcohol Control Board will allow that. Mayor?
A couple of things. One, I think you, you normally get this, you have a 30-day grace period, an opening period for somebody to request a hearing. There are people actually watch the liquor control site for applications that come through, and they pay attention, a lot of attention to that. It's quite possible that somebody would get a jump on that. We don't do that many requests for hearings. I can understand the desire to do that just to make sure the process doesn't get rusty. I ask the same thing of you whenever you do an assessment on sidewalks and roads. That said, I'd also request, if you're going to have to request a hearing, request it down here rather than Columbus, to save everybody the difficulty of going up there, as well as, so everybody knows what the process looks like. What? The last thing is, if you have any real objections, I've trexed four different establishments so far. If you have any objections to that, let me know. They include salams, Zoe's, I believe, Overhang, and this Acid's Uncorked, which I don't know if they pulled the trigger on that or not. I think the intention, of course, is to free up the quota system and the licenses. This is what you're seeing as a quota system that's, we're over quota, these things are out there, they move around, and that's what you're watching here. There's different philosophies of whether it's good or bad to have another establishment uptown, drinking establishment uptown. I can't envision how Fluff would actually go about doing this, to tell you the truth, but I could understand that they, if they want to assist in their finances by actually, you know, if they have to close down at 8:00 because there's no wine to be had, that to me is, you know, something that they might want to explore. I also know philosophically, there's been a counter, like too many bars in one place, to the opposite, saying, "Well, if they're all in one place, we can just monitor them better." So there's a lot of pros and cons. There's also the binge drinking aspect that the university is trying to handle, and realize we changed the parade routes for a good reason, homecoming parade routes for a good reason. So just be aware, there's pros and cons to all of this. And maybe the, you know, the hearing, it's up to you guys. But I say, just to watch the process might be instructive.
Well, I think that, I want to reemphasize, it's not us making the decision about this. This is a whole different entity that makes a decision. And you can request a hearing in the county seat, is one of the options, and we will do that. And it says right on the form. And I think that next week, we can make a motion to request a hearing. I don't, I don't want to have people go away saying that, you know, "We are requesting a hearing, so we're anti-business," or "anti-drinking wine," or "anti-adult drinking," or any of those sort of things. It's our function to be a voice of all people. And so I think that one of the things is that people, you know, and unfortunately, maybe you can look at it, because we haven't had requested meetings for the last five, and maybe we should have. Maybe people didn't come to us and say, "We really want this, and you're the unlucky applicants." And so I think it's a, it's an opportunity for a community discussion about this sort of thing, and about what we want uptown and such.
Could you just please offer our ear to anybody that has concerns that wants to talk? We are, any day, any time.
Right.
Nobody's approached us, and we're so approachable. We'd love to talk to anybody that has concerns. And I feel like part of the, you know, restricting the dialogue between us and whoever might have concerns only magnifies, you know, people's idea about what we have in mind.
Right, right.
We've worked four years really hard to develop, you know, some faith in what we're doing in this community. And it's, it's hard for me to imagine that somebody would have a hard time coming to us.
Right. And, and you are now, you've been on the community television saying that. A lot of people watch. And I don't, I think that, right, and I would, I would hope that people, we can have a community dialogue, because that's, that's what, part of this, it's not just the hearing, it's a dialogue about what we want for our uptown and those sort of things. And this is a start, and, you know, that hopefully people can be, you know, more upfront with you, and maybe they'll contact you tomorrow. But, so, yep. So I will, on agenda, put a motion, will be just a motion to request a hearing in the county seat, which is Athens for, for this. So, thank you. Any other questions on that? Okay. Next, I do have one miscellaneous.
So do I.
Okay. Would you like to have your miscellaneous?
Oh, you can have your miscellaneous.
Okay, I'll have my miscellaneous first. I've been approached by Kathy Heck to put out the possibility of having a one reading resolution to, once again, complain about what's going on state government. Unfortunately, they are not listening to local control and local people. There have been several bills passed in the state legislature that, that pretty much reduced the opportunity for voting by the citizens of Ohio. In 2004, you know, voting was expanded, there was expanded early voting, the removal of having to have a set, what is it, no-fault early voting? I'm not sure about that one. You can do vote-by-mail, allowing boards of elections to set individual voting hours, and allowing the individual board of elections to mail vote-by-mail applications where appropriate. And, you know, this was in, put into place because every, what works for Columbus doesn't necessarily work for Ohio, for Athens. We have different needs and wants, we have different working criteria and different working hours. So when you say that you can only, you know, the secretary of state says you can only vote from, you know, 9:00 till 5:00 in-person in the board of elections, may work really well for really, you know, urban area, and doesn't necessarily work well here because it, people have to drive 25 miles. So there's a lot of issues, and the Ohio State Legislature has passed numerous bills to roll back those sort of progressive voting expansion opportunities. And so we would like to put a resolution to support, to, to voice our concerns about the restriction of voting opportunities in Ohio, and send it to the Ohio General Assembly next, for, on next Monday. Questions? So Kathy?
I was just going to add that Cuyahoga County is planning to pass a resolution tonight, and hopefully other entities will follow suit, so they get the message.
That's the county, not the, not a city?
Yeah, well, they don't have, like, a city, yeah, they have a different setup there. They have a county council. And so it's comparable.
Got it.
But a little different.
Bigger. A little bigger.
Well, you know, they had some issues there several years ago, so they, you know, redone their government setup there. So it's a county council that will be passing this tonight. And so I think Member Patterson mentioned, he went online, has already seen it, and so everybody can look at it and see how they feel about more specifics before next week.
Great.
Thank you.
Question? Okay, so we'll put that on as a one reading resolution next week. Miscellaneous?
My miscellaneous. Over the weekend, I was contacted by a concerned citizen about, oh, I hate to use the word rash of burglies been going through the town, but let's just say there seems to be an awareness that there has been burglaries going on. This person requested from me was there, would he be able to get the police reports, incidents reports about anything that may be happening in his neighborhood? And I said, "As far as I know, that he could approach the police department and maybe ask for that." And then he came back and said, "Well, how come this stuff is not on the city website?" And I didn't have a good answer. And the more I thought about it, I thought, it really should be. The problem is, well, who would do it? You know, which, who would have the responsibility of essentially taking the media reports that they, say the police department sends out to council and the local media here for dissemination? Now, the problem with that approach is, I find out what happens, and say the messenger will find out what happens. But then at the messenger level, their editors can say, "I really don't consider that newsworthy today. I think I'll settle on that, maybe put it out tomorrow, next week, or publish it at all." Is it, it's, it may not really be news for that day. So there may have been a burglary or some incident, and it may not get out to the public. So the, even though that is a good way of getting information out, I'm not criticizing it at all, it's not 100% foolproof. So I would suggest, that's why I'm bringing it up, under planning and development, we plan to put this information, which is already public anyway, it's going out to the messenger and the A News and who else, should be put on the, on the website somewhere. Should be a page like police reports or some fire reports. The only problem that we have, even though we, let's say that we do that, and we put all this information out there, we don't have what OU does. I don't know what their police department does. I don't know who, if they've arrested, I don't know if there's been a burglary in a particular frat house or on-house, on-campus housing, dorm room or something like that. I don't know, I never hear about that. There may have been, may not have been, I don't know. How we can work that out, I don't know. But I think it's something we should be looking into, so.
I think JPAC might be the perfect forum for something like that.
JPAC?
The Joint Police Advisory Council.
Yeah, right.
Both, both police chiefs attend that.
Only we had a member who was on that.
I don't know who the chair is.
Yeah, me either.
I would also say that there's been quite a bit of work with Chief Pyle and the neighborhood executives, and they worked for months on a do's and don'ts list for neighborhood awareness and crime watch kind of format, because the traditional crime watch kind of thing has gone by the wayside. But this went out, I know it went out to the near north, the west side, and then they did it on their Facebook page, at least to the point to go to the city website and look at what the do's and don'ts are. Some people are very reluctant, if they see suspicious behavior, to call the police. And Pyle has encouraged that. Police call, we'll come, we'll check it out. And I know whenever I see something like that, I encourage people to pick up the phone and call the non-emergency number and have, you know, and again, just a car cruising the neighborhood, I'm always impressed with, because that makes a statement, that makes a statement for people who are kind of checking out the neighborhood. So I know that that's a recent thing, that is on the website, folks. You can go to the do's and don'ts. It's part of his community policing. I think that comes out of the, some of the JPAC initiative as well. So he's worked really hard at that, and quite a few people, you know, there was a core group of people who worked really hard at getting that out. So, so that's just another point.
Kathy?
I attend my West Side Community Association meetings, and this was one of the main topics of discussion two and a half weeks ago. And there are people on both sides of this, however, the majority of people there were interested in seeing a report, as I was. And, but I think council should look at it, because that police report includes everything.
Yes.
You know, domestic violence, it includes everything. For someone to go in and try to purge it, so it's just, you know, burglaries and things like that, isn't going to happen. It's a lot of work. And it's still, as you said, it is public record and can be requested. But I would just encourage council, as I said, I was in favor of getting it, we were going to offer it, you know, as an option to people in our group who are interested. But there were people there who had issues with what was being put out there with addresses and things like that. No names, but, and just as an aside to that, just a little bit less than a week later, my vehicle was burgled in my driveway on the west side. And when I found my report, I was shocked that they came, it was so close to the house that they had to come up my driveway and back there. Anyway, when filing a report, the police officer was very nice, but evidently, this is a bigger problem than I realized, even after our discussion at our neighborhood meeting. I thought maybe it was a west side thing, and it's not. It's, they go from neighborhood to neighborhood all around town. So I don't know if this is, you know, a way to help curb that or not, but I would encourage you to look at the reports before you make a decision.
Yeah, I want to just follow up on Auditor Heck's comment, and that is, I see the shift reports, as they come out, at the end of every shift, you see them. And they do contain addresses, they contain names. So there's not only whatever the crime was, disclosing individuals.
The local media gets that same report.
Right. It is all public record, you're right.
The messenger gets the same thing that we're reading in our email. They get names and the phone, they get all that.
Perhaps not so. I mean, not all calls for services are listed in the media.
Not, not all, but...
But that is something that they actually go and seek out.
But the email that council receives from the police department is just simply titled "media."
Correct.
And part, and if you look at the media list, which I do, I see who all gets it, and it's all of us, you, and our local media.
Other people can sign up too. You can go to our website and sign up for what you want to get.
I don't think it's a good solution. I think the website is a webpage where we have the actual statistics, and I think people, we're talking about neighborhood awareness, is if people would just go there and see that on the front page, they would become more aware and become more self-policing, so.
We, we have a crime, crime watch, crimes of the month. And maybe what, what needs to hap, I, I am concerned about privacy, and these are incidences, they haven't been proven, they haven't gone through, you know, they're just, you know, they haven't been through court, they're just incidences. And things get on, addresses get on, and, and there is a privacy issue, there's a difference between requesting it and even the media screens certain things. When they put, the messenger has it listed, they don't, they don't necessarily put, you know, the addresses and such. They may say, "West Side," you know, "Congress Street," or whatever. Usually it's popcorn burning, if they like to list those. But I think that we maybe need to work with JPAC and have it, a happy medium between everything and burglary as maybe crimes of the week sort of thing, or trends of the week or something. I don't know.
And I believe the crimes, under the crimes of the month for this last time were the string of burglaries. I think that was listed as one of the, they grouped it, but they said there is, so in a way, they were also saying this is a concern and for the community. And again, I think that do's and don'ts lists of, you know, on the city website is an important thing for people to read and just pay attention to. You know, I know I made a comment about people knocking on your door who you don't know, asking for work. You know, that can be a way of looking over your property. You know, I don't want to believe that, but that is, that can be, you know... You want to keep in mind that there are things besides burglaries you would want to see, like suspicious persons cited, vandalism, things like that. You know, there are a few other things on there besides just straight burglaries that you would want to know about. And I think part of the issue is, right now, by the time we hear about it, there have been a bunch of them, you know, it's, I had no idea it was such a big problem. And then within a week, finding out it happened to me. So...
Well, speaking to that, I can't remember seeing the report about that.
Again, you might not have, if it's still under investigation. There were four in the west side area. We asked, we talked with the chief this morning regarding this. And OU does do a report at the end of each shift that the police chiefs exchange that. But again, as I said... asking for work. You know, that can be a way of looking over your property. You know, I don't want to believe that, but that is, that can be, you know.
You want to keep in mind that there are things besides burglaries you would want to see, like suspicious, suspicious persons cited, vandalism, things like that. Um, you know, there are a few other things on there besides just straight burglaries that, that you would want to know about. And I think part of the issue is, um, right now, by the time we hear about it, there've been a bunch of them, you know, it's, I had no idea it was such a big problem. And then within a week, finding out it happened to me, so, um...
Well, speaking to that, I can't remember seeing the report about that.
Again, you might not have, if it's still under investigation. There were four in the west side area.
I know.
As we talked with the chief this morning regarding this. Um, and OU does, um, do a report at the end of each shift that, that the police chiefs exchange that.
Right.
But again, as the police chief Pyle explained, you're not going to see many burglaries necessarily in a dorm versus the home residence, they just don't seem to have the same kind of activity, um, occurring. And we can't stress enough to see something, say something, we tell it to the kids, the students, you know, we want everybody to be aware, but, um, be happy to work towards it, there are some issues and concerns, and I'm sure the chiefs will share that at Thursday's J-PAC meeting, so.
Um, I did talk to the fellow that you're talking about, uh, he went into the police department, looked at the reports, I believe, he said. Um, I know also the neighborhood associations got the, they got at least the December and January call for services, average about six hundred to seven hundred, maybe even more, eight hundred call for services, everything from shoplifting and burglary to, you know, check floating.
Right.
And domestic violence.
Barking dogs.
Dog barking.
Yes, it's a call for service. It, you call up, it gets on the log.
Right.
You can, you can drop that into a spreadsheet and massage it any way you want, you could redact some of it, but really that's not, you know, again, the discussion at the last couple, uh, meetings with myself and the neighborhood executives, is that how much do you want to give out there, how much do you want to manipulate it, how much do you redact? And realize you could say, take, and just put the streets, but if you're trying to sleuth what's going on in your neighborhood, you know, Congress is a long street, East State Street is a long street, how do you look at this trend? I mean, if you're, if you're trying to play Sherlock Holmes, maybe that's well and good, uh, do you want all those names and numbers? Um, I, I know that at least January and December are out there right now in the neighborhood associations. I sent him a copy of the spreadsheet for Januaries, which is the latest one I had. And again, I'm getting that from the neighborhood associations, I get the media reports, I know messenger puts a map out there, uh, it's not always up to date, but they, they're trending as well, they, they go onto Google Earth and put a little pinpricks wherever there's been a, a problem in the county. Uh, you know, it's, it's nice to say you will want real-time stuff like this, but is it really that effective? More effective is to do preventive maintenance or preventive action, saying, if you don't recognize somebody, know your neighborhood, know your neighbor, have a phone tree out there. These are things that, that do it. So, if somebody does look odd, or somebody's going in a house and bearing out a TV, you can say, whoa, who are you? You know? Or at least call the police and have them ask.
Exactly. Well, the, the other thing that, that concerns me is that, um, no matter how we approach this and how far we take it, someone has to be there to do it, and there, there's man-hours or, or people-hours involved, there's time, there's money, there's equipment. And you just can't have a person doing it, there has to be backup, you know, so, it's just not, it's, it sounds simple when we just talk about it over coffee, but once you start working on the, the actual mechanism and what it is you're trying to put out there and who's going to do it, it gets a little more complicated. And that's something we would have to look at.
I think the old-fashioned way, as you were describing, is an important thing, have, have people, whether it's a neighborhood, you know, phone list or email list or whatever. I think of the most recent, this is kind of on the side, but y'all remember Mitzi, the dog? And Mitzi was lost. And because of Facebook and because of newspaper articles and because of other things, Mitzi was found. And people kept citing Mitzi, this dog ran for what, two months? You know, it was lost over Christmas, the end of December, and it was found in February, was it, I don't know, January, I can, I don't remember. But the bottom line is, that was old-fashioned kind of people talking to each other with the use of electronic, you know, whatever.
Social media.
Social media.
Chris and I used to talk about that front porch process, so...
The front porch forum was another idea. But anyway, I like, I like Steve's, uh, idea of, you know, the J-PAC approach and, and looking at it from a number of angles, because Jeff, I am cognizant, yes, that every time we ask for another piece of information, it's a staff person's time in the city, and so, what, if you're asking that, what's it going to give? Um, and Chief Pyle has been working with the neighborhood associations, trying to get more people involved in the neighborhoods and doing that, some kind of that old-fashioned thing. So, maybe a combination of some more information, maybe could we do something more with maps and, and see what J-PAC has to suggest.
J-PAC has a website and possibly using it in a couple of different ways, working its way through J-PAC's website.
Well, maybe what you can do is when, um, you talked about at the J-PAC meeting and you can report back and, because this is not going to be solved overnight, and, uh, I think that there's a multitude of different ways. I guess the thing is, is if people are very concerned about it, they can apply to have the, the information sent to them and be on that mailing list.
At least for the media and local, and I can't impress enough that we've already had issues with having what we're trying to do in, in this social media world and our website and reporting, we've had people report crimes that go to a desk and code until Monday morning. Pick up the phone and call, please.
Right, right.
The old-fashioned way. Yeah.
A timely announcement is that J-PAC is meeting this Thursday at Baker, Baker Center at 6:30. It's open to the public, I would encourage anyone who's watching tonight and is interested in addressing J-PAC, um, and in particular, both, both police chiefs, um, on this topic and any other topic for that matter, uh, please feel free to attend.
Great. And the J-PAC stands for?
Well, Joint Police Advisory Council, which is an MOU under the big MOU umbrella between the city and the university. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's a good note to end on with this miscellaneous, any other miscellaneous for planning and development? Nope? Okay. Transportation?
Okay, big breath, nothing major tonight, no major, uh, money needs at this point. So, transportation, the major, um, notification is the Columbus Road Bike Path Spur, um, meeting that is being held, it's an open forum, it will be, um, held Friday, the 14th, from 2 to 4, in the AceNet conference room. Uh, that's located down in the AceNet, um, complex down there, it's Building C, 94 Columbus Road, and, uh, citizens are strongly encouraged to, uh, come and give feedback, um, on alignment issues and where the bridge will go across, and environmental issues, whatever you have that you want to share, there will be, uh, engineering staff there to, uh, hear what you have to say. So, I encourage everybody, I know I went to the Columbus Road one, there was a lot of maps, a lot of discussion, it was a good, it was a good open house. Will there be cookies?
I, no.
Okay.
Unless you bring them, bring the cookies.
Jeff is great, bring them.
And, um, the other thing that, uh, just wanted, because it kind of overlaps with the transportation committee, is the Planning, uh, Commission, um, has, Jeff's been attending that, and they have put a, um, I guess, a manifest out to the members to take on different quarters of the city.
Corridors.
And, uh, those quarters being, so each member of Planning Commission, Paula, you can, and Jeff, maybe you can mention this, but the different quarters are Richland, Columbus Road, Union, Stimson, and State. And each person has, and then what, what are you supposed to be doing, I guess, basically, when you take these quarters? What are you looking at?
We're supposed to get out of our cars, for one, we're supposed to walk the street. Luckily, I got East State, so I should be in shape. Um, and look at it, and then envision it, envision it from a pedestrian-friendly corridor on enhancements, and, and I think ultimately is, is to determine, are we going to have different overlays? Because you have to admit, if you take East State from the bypass out, that's completely different than East State coming on in.
Right.
Um, Richland South is completely different than Columbus Road and, and West Union and what that may become with OU's plans and medical corridors, so, that's our homework. We have a month, I think, I recall.
The, the concept there is that, we're talking about overlays, we have B3s that are, have different flavors, B3 North Court Street, B3 Stimson, B3 East State Street, uh, I think B3 West Union, my assignment's West Union. Uh, we're supposed to look at that and say, okay, what is the flavor? There are different aspects to this, there'll all be three, that's one giant commish, uh, so the question is, how do we, do we do an overlay that presents different atmosphere of what we want to see happen there? The other thing is to look, we're tasked with looking at the comprehensive plan, which looked at all these corridors, uh, see what the, uh, their implementation and their thoughts were on where this should go, looking at the setback rules, what we should modify, architectural designs that they thought would be important to incorporate to these corridors. I think the only corridor we did cover was the River Corridor, uh, Steichenberg's pet peeve there. Uh, but that was our task.
And, and the different kind of overlays would be...
Well, like we said, the whole, you know, look what's occurred on Stimson Avenue, you know, and that being B3, it's becoming much more of a B2, 8, or R3 kind of mix, so, we can look at existing, we can look at the plan, try to determine, watch movement, watch how people travel there, are they walking, are they driving?
Look at Stimson as a B3, is it mostly pedestrian, is it local, is it just the students, is it, uh, near east side? And versus West State, East State Street, which is B3, and that's pretty much mall and pretty much driven, but, you know, car, car-focused, car-centric, and how you want to change that, I mean, it, the size, the size of the stores, the number of parking spaces, whether you want to far setbacks, close setbacks. I remember Stimson actually recommended having the, the buildings come right up to the edge there. Uh, they recommended, uh, I think actually they, they texted, the artist rendering actually took away the parking on that area too. Not that it's well-used, but the fact is that's a different, you know, mix on that. Talking to some of the neighborhood associations, I think, I think a member of the Far East Side Association executive was saying, you know, really, really need a bigger post office, because it's, trying to get in there at any given time is very difficult. Not that I think the, the posts, you know, US Postal Service will embarge their footprint there, or even want to at this point, but, you know, what do we want to see happen and what the changes will occur? In terms of Stimson, it's going to be a harder mix, because we're going to change, uh, the, the South Loop Road is going to, in theory, eventually come out onto Stimson, that's going to change the flavor. If everybody's taking that, nobody would go up Stimson towards Carpenter, we don't know. So, these are the things to look at. Again, the, the zoning we have right now is pretty much blanket, and, and do we, do we put conditional uses in it, do we put an overlay for each flavor? B3 down on Columbus Road, I mean, what's that look like versus East State? Well, they're very similar, but you have an overlay of wellhead protection there, you have a different, uh, layout there, it's, it's, it's not going to get that far back into the river, so.
Okay, thank you.
More than you want, no problem.
So, if, if people, citizens are interested in also doing this?
Absolutely. Those planning commission meetings are always open.
Right. Or if they want to email members of the Planning Commission with their insight in some of this, because I know some people walk Stimson every single day, and that's what we really want, so we're asking for input also. Please.
Yeah.
Can you announce the date of the next Planning Commission meeting?
The 20th.
April, uh, it's not at the, or...
We've got a month, the next meeting's actually a week.
A week from Thursday.
This Thursday.
So, you're, you're kind of getting input for the next month and then discussing it a month, and you will, um, announce that Planning Commission meeting where you are ready to discuss it?
Tentatively April 3rd, but we'll, for bringing back a corridor discussion.
Great, thank you.
I think our deadline's the 20th, isn't that what Nicholas told us too, for their homework assignments?
It couldn't be, that's not a month.
Oh, well, no, he wanted, he wanted deadline.
So, input.
Just sorry, uh, could you refresh our collective memory of who has what corridor?
Do you all remember?
I remember mine. I remember mine, I think, uh, I think, mine's West Union, yours is East State, I think RJ was Stimson, wasn't he?
That's right, yeah.
Because he was just going, saying, I just want to go up to Carpenter's.
So, did Nicholas get Richland?
Maybe, I don't know, still these Nancy.
Nancy.
I got cut out.
I was right. Sorry, I had it written down somewhere.
That's okay.
Thanks for your work on this, because there's a lot of, uh, visualization, a lot of, there's just a lot of overlays to what you're going to need to do, so. Um, I have another miscellaneous item, I know that the pedestrian bike advisory committee has not been active, and, um, I have been, people have been approaching me regarding the pedestrian crosswalks on campus, um, around campus, and the concerns with safety. So, I don't know if we need to revise that group, or if this is something you guys and your conversations with Planning Commission and looking at these corridors, um, I know that, you know, we have now, recently, it's come out that Park Place is being looked at as, as to being closed, and part of that is due, too heavy pedestrian crossing and at that particular area of campus, I know those are our streets, but, um, I just want to mention that it, it does seem to be coming, becoming more difficult. I mean, every day, someone says something to me about the crosswalk on Richland Avenue in, in front of Steve's building, you know, um, I, I know.
Short of flying a plane over with a banner that says, please stop here for pedestrians, we have about every control in place.
That would be an interesting statistic to know from the police, every time they get called to a near miss or an accident or whatever, um, both on, you know, whatever, J-PAC, maybe you could bring that up at J-PAC again?
We have.
I know.
It's been addressed.
Um, so anyways, I, I just wanted to share, because it is transportation, you guys are looking at this in these corridors, this is a huge concern in this city, and, um, maybe there's been a shift over the last five years or so, everyone's into their phone and, and all those kind of things, and walk off the curb, but it, it is, it's, it's pretty significant, I think, at times, um, so, I don't know if we need to re-start that group, I don't know that we need to do that, but, um...
I see merit, you meant, there was a meeting convened, one of you went Friday, last Friday, about the South Green Drive Loop Road, thank you.
And Kent went, I believe it was Kent there.
Yeah, I remember, but there was there as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't know if there was some discussion with the planner, okay.
I can speak to it, um, but this was specific to South Green Drive.
Correct.
So, this was this nonexistent drive, but it did come up with crosswalks, um, and I have to disclose and share that one of my chief concerns as well is some of these sidewalks, especially sidewalks that all of a sudden show up on curves on roads, and those aren't good places to all of a sudden have a crosswalk.
Right.
But, um, it was certainly addressed, um, the concerns were laid out in the planning, well, for this public forum for South Green Drive, and I, I know I, I am in complete agreement with you in terms of seeing what's going on. One of the big concerns is that with South Green Drive that goes through is the, um, Bike Path Spur that comes off of Mill Street, and what will the traffic, well, we know the traffic, car traffic flow is going to be, but what's the bicycle traffic going to be in terms of being able to cross over? There were several options that came forward, speed table was one, some other possibilities, um, but, uh, everyone that was there was very open to all the suggestions that were being laid out. Something that I've often brought up is, is the, the connectors that are being mentioned all the time with the South Green Drive and getting bicycle traffic across over to the bike path itself, so there's, there is concern.
So, whether or not that, so that continues to convene on an as-needed basis, or it gets wrapped into the monthly transportation meetings that you convene?
Right.
I think they were open to meeting.
I wanted to bring it up, yeah.
Okay.
One other miscellaneous item is, um, we had a meeting with ODOT, and there's a current traffic study, uh, being conducted, uh, as we speak, numbers are being tabulated, uh, at the, uh, 33 East State Street, uh, intersection there. So, um, if you want to talk a little bit more about that, Paula, I didn't, just to share with the public?
Just that they're, just at the beginning, they, they do plan on coming back and doing a, a public meeting, I think we landed on two, one will be a Saturday morning kiosk around Kroger, Starbucks area or what have you, to try to get that input, but, and then a community center meeting where they will show us some of their preliminary results. This is part of the safety study that we received funding for that goes from Home Street all the way to Walmart, and, uh, they, they listened to all of our concerns about getting sidewalk on the south side of the street, about improving, uh, by eliminating left-turn accesses and trying to improve, there were some, they, they left it pretty wide open.
They did.
We talked about the diverging diamond and some other control measures that they used, something, what is the Michigan thing called?
Oh, a Michigan turn or something, so it's...
They're going to look at all of that and come back, and then that sets us up to try to, um, seek funding. We all are recognizing East State Street is going to need an overlay, but we want to do additional repairs at the same time.
And the federal government is really concerned with backups onto highways and all those kind of things, and as we all well know, that sometimes the, the exit lanes, ramps back up onto the actual highway, which is very dangerous, so, that whole area is being looked at, and it's a, I would say it's a federal state initiative, so, um, that's ongoing.
Just to jump topics, another miscellaneous, uh, myself and Senator Cochran went to the, uh, rural planning, transportation planning, or, uh, program that's going on at Buckeye Hills for regional, ten-county area, I believe, looking at how to, how to look at our needs for transportation. Also... both in terms of public, rail, air, as well as highways. The idea there is to look at the needs for all the counties and see how they plug in and try to speak with one voice eventually. I'm on the technical advisory commission, a portion of it, committee, as well as the policy committee, because I'm on the Buckeye Hills Executive Committee. You're on the public participation, right?
Citizens advisory.
Citizens advisory, okay. And again, really just to look at goals in the aggregate for the southeast quadrant of Ohio. And one of the things, of course, that jumps out, of course, is mobility in terms of public transit. We have an aging population that will not always be able to drive around where they want. We have a very, very thin population compared to northern Ohio. So those are the issues right there, some of it. And then, of course, there's no real funding in there, but the idea is to build up consensus for where we want to go. Did I explain that properly?
I think so.
Is there anything you want to add?
At this point, you know, it was my first meeting, so just learning a lot, was informative for me to hear some of the information coming from ODOT and what an impactful winter especially that we've had as far as expenditures on salt and road treatment, road crews and, you know, all the infrastructure improvements, the patching and fixing that our roads that it's going to be required after all of the tough winter that we've had, so keep you updated.
This last meeting was pretty much educational for funding, how roads get funded in general, whether through the gas tax, by the state or the feds, as well as how metropolitan transportation organizations in Columbus functions. They've been there a lot longer, they have actually a revenue stream, which we do not, but the idea is if you can build something, eventually you can get something pulled together.
And I think that's Buckeye Hills' mission, is to pull all these rural communities together in our southeast quadrant here and begin to lobby so that they do have that funding stream, because otherwise it's hit and miss and so...
Well, it's like Whoville, if we all sing the same time, we might be heard.
Yes, that's correct. Okay, any other miscellaneous items for transportation? All right, I'm done.
We're all done now.
We're all done.